We're going to begin this board of selectmen meeting on Thursday, August 4th with ninety-one degrees outside. We're glad we're inside at the school. So again, thank you to the SAU. We're going to start off with public comments. John Ellis?
I think you can hear me.
Yeah, my adoring fans, right? I wanted to request that the selectmen consider and authorize the purchase of a first aid kit and defibrillator for Whipple Hall. Currently, there is none in there. And I think in the hallway where the fire extinguisher currently exists, I think it would be a worthwhile purchase. It is true that the police have a defibrillator. The only issue is, will an officer be present when we need it? And otherwise, we could not run in there and just grab it and use it. The same thing holds true for the first aid kit. When I asked them, that's for their private use there, that is the police. And I think it would be prudent because there's, as I understand, there's square dancing in there. And then last weekend, there was a, I'll call it a beauty pageant for young ladies that are looking for scholarships. And so there were fifty-some individuals in there at that time. Fortunately, there was no issue, but I thought with those, the age of six to eighty-six in there, it would be great to have that accessible as you enter the hall itself in that small hallway where the current fire extinguisher is. The second thing I wanted to bring up was the Energy Committee will be having a solar open house this Saturday for those that are interested in in learning more about solar for their, for their homes. Also, we're continuing with the electric bike loner program through August 9th, and that's been very successful. And that's also held at Whipple Hall, which is a reason why I was looking for a first aid kit in case somebody would fall and, and, you know, scratch themselves, and we could at least patch them up before the fire department or first aid came if it was serious. And that's going on. And then on September 24th, we'll be sponsoring the Electric Vehicle Expo, which will be held, New London Heritage Historical Village with Cursage and Sunapee Region. And that's coming up. You'll hear, you'll hear more about that. But I would appreciate the while they're all important, I would appreciate your consideration of the first aid kit and for the safety of all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any response? Comment?
I have some. But you want to go first, Nancy?
Well, I think it's prudent. I was a little surprised that there's no first aid kit. I think that anywhere there's a public gathering place, there should be at least access to some kind of first aid kit. The defibrillator, it's prudent to also have people who are able to use a defibrillator in order to have one. And I think that as we go forward with looking at the work that we're doing on Whipple Hall, it should be something we should consider at some point. But we'll also need to talk about, you know, how it would be used, who would be using it, and so on and so forth. You're right. I mean, our goal is to, since this is the town hall, move our voting back there. So it might be something that also could be a fundraising activity of some sort. I know that other areas of doing have done that, but I think it's something we should keep on the agenda.
So I'd like to know, Kim, how many do we have around town? How many other public places do not currently have them? I know the beaches do. Where, where else? Do you know offhand where else in town?
Not all of them. I mean, we are designated as an AED community for the number we have. There was a count, the hospital did a count, town offices have one, fire department, Public Works.
So library have one?
I believe so, yes. But it wouldn't be a bad idea. I would agree with, with Nancy that having one in a public location like that. And I mean, the one at the town office, we have been trained on it, but my understanding is that it kind of walks you through it. There's like a some sort of recording that says, put the paddle here, put the paddle there.
For reasonable people who know it. Yeah.
Yeah. I hope I'm reasonable. I hope I never have to use it, but I feel like I could probably do it. But yeah, so we, there are quite a number of AEDs in town. There is not one there.
So I asked that question because John makes a good point, but I think we ought to know if there are other places also, and we are and I think at one point, the hospital supplied these to some parts of the town. My recollection from the past is, so I think we should do it, but I agree with Nancy. Let's do the whole Whipple Hall thing. And if we could, please get an inventory of where they are. And I think simply just leaving one in the hall with no operator probably isn't a great idea. Maybe there should be a sign even that just says, you know, go next door to the dispatched window. They must have it there.
Yeah, there's, there's a sign.
Be a police officer.
Yeah, there's a sign there that says AED on premises, and it says Police Department, but probably if somebody was frantic.
Yeah, I was going to say, it might take a little time. What's the current cost of a defibrillator?
I looked it up, about thousand, thousand fifteen hundred. I think we got a grant for the, the hospital ones. I think were cheaper than that. They, they bought in bulk.
I looked it up today. They're thirteen hundred to twenty-eight hundred dollars retail.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, old business. Well, again, consider the recommendation on charitable tax exemption for King Solomon's Lodge, number fourteen, as prepared by Chief Assessor Chris McAllister. Thank you, Howard, and folks for getting, pulling the information that we had talked about at the last meeting in a short period of time. I don't know who wants to go first. There's quite a bit of history with this. Chris?
There is, but I think the disqualifying part is in that early, early, before RSA's came to light. I think the first disqualifier in there is a corporation. I, I feel at this time, we have to stand by the recommendation. I stand by my recommendation. I did actually reach out to the court because they have clerks that can research for you. And anything that's gone before them, nothing like this has been brought up. So there is no further information I have on that.
Okay. Kim, do you want to just go through what you were able to find?
Thanks for bringing that in, Howard. I think that it's, it's good law to the extent that it hasn't been repealed or amended by the, by the courts or the legislature. But on the face of it, I don't, I agree with Chris. I don't see anything in there that changes what Chris's original recommendation was. That document, I was hoping the document said that the organization would be property tax exempt. It doesn't say that.
Howard, do you want to respond to that at all, or?
I'm not sure that anything I would say would help our cause. The, the whole legislative piece does say that it's a corporation and it's for the purpose of charitable and benevolent activities. And it puts a limit on, on the value of those activities through the course of a year, which was five thousand dollars in eighteen sixty-two. The only other thing that I could add, and this is more, anyway, the only other thing I could add is I have been a Mason since two thousand and three, and to the best of my knowledge, we've never used a dime collected from the public to support the upkeep and maintenance or improvements to the building or the property. We've always raised money amongst the brothers for those purposes. And we had one very generous brother who provided us with an opportunity for a match program to invest funds so that perhaps we'd have a little bit of money to support maintenance and upkeep going forward. So I don't honestly know how to better qualify as a potentially tax exempt organization than those things. So the rest of the decision is up to you guys.
Did we have a sense of what the tax would be at this point?
Roughly six thousand dollars.
Any comments from Janet or Bill?
I guess, Howard, I would have to say we have to support Chris's assessment of this. We want to, we don't want to put you in a, an awkward position or get you penalized for not having paid taxes in the past. But I guess you could go to the Land Appeals Board. Is that right?
I highly recommend it.
Okay.
Because I think if in fact this was a law and still on the books.
Yeah.
Let them set a precedent. Let them set a law.
Yeah. So I guess that would be my recommendation. I think that would be the best path forward for you all.
Yeah, I unfortunately agree with, with you, Janet. And I think I said the last meeting that I thought the appeal route was probably the one should go, and that would solve everybody's problems at this point. Or try to solve them, I should say.
Yeah, Gary Wall. Do you have a contact?
A what?
A contact.
For the appeal.
At this place.
Oh, yes. Yep. We can provide you the form. And I believe it's my understanding on the exemptions that they go quicker with those than they do tax appeals. Move them forward quickly.
So we can get that from you?
Yep, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, then.
So I'll move that we accept the recommendation of the assessor to deny this appeal. This exemption.
Yeah. John, did you have a question for?
Does this mean they have to pay the, the back taxes? And what does it mean if you can't get the appeal changed or upheld for them?
The court would decide that, but
Right.
I would not, that would not be my recommendation.
Right. But if they don't, is there a tax then they have to pay to New London?
They have to pay the current, current real estate tax, yes.
They would pay that. Is it retroactive to eighteen sixty-six or whatever the first thing was? Yeah, it would just be this year.
The Masons, they, they were approved back in two thousand and seven after.
Yep.
Anyway.
Understand.
My understanding is it would be going forward, but that's not my decision.
Right. No, I understand.
They, they will take the appeal.
Okay.
So we will hear from the Appeal Board on it, but I think that's also something the Board of Selectmen could make a decision on. Could they not relative to, no? Whether back taxes?
No.
No.
No, the BTLA, DRA could order that, correct, Chris? That has nothing to do with the selection. This, they would order the selectmen to assess it against them. But it's, it's a kind of a rare thing. Have you seen that that happened much? We've seen it recently, but it's not, I don't think it's a very common thing.
I think it's very rare.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Bill, do you want to restate your motion then?
I move that we accept the chief assessor's recommendation that we deny this exemption.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move forward. Howard, yes? Question?
Now, I have two things.
Okay.
Thank you for postponing the decision last week and giving us a chance to provide more information. I appreciate it. Secondly, since about nineteen ninety-two or ninety-three, the state of New Hampshire has kind of led the nation in the Department of Environmental Services, in the Department, whatever the organization runs, safety issues in businesses. Instead of being punitive, they are interested in compliance. And we do the same kind of a thing with our own zoning decisions here in New London, that if somebody is doing something that makes a lot or a piece of property more compliant than it was before, that often is approved. So in this particular case, the town is moving, in my opinion, the town is moving to follow the guidance and be more in compliance with what's recommended from higher up. And it is highly unlikely that the, the board, whatever the name of it is, would come forward and be punitive in nature because we're moving forward and complying. We're following the rules. You know, whether it's an appeal or something else, we'll, we'll be working on that. So I honestly appreciate the cooperation and willingness to work with us because we'll figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Appreciate it. Okay, under new business, we have a request of the First Baptist Church for repair refurbishment of the town clock. The estimated request is eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is another matter where Kim has done an incredible amount of back work. And there's a lot of historical information about this. Kim?
Right. Okay, so the clock on the First Baptist Church is owned by the town of New London. Back, I forget the year, the town wanted a clock in the tallest building in town. So the church cooperated with the town and allowed the clock to be put there. The most recent repairs that I can find of any magnitude was in two thousand and six. There was a fund, there was a Warren article at the town meeting in two thousand and six to see about raising ten thousand dollars. That motion was tabled because adequate funds were raised privately. So the question now, I guess, is, one, do you want to make the necessary repairs to the clock? Remembering that it's in a historic building and obviously an important part of the town. Secondly, do you want it to come out of town funds? Or do you want to try and fundraise for it like was done quite successfully before? I do note that they look to do this work soon. So I don't think you'd have to commit to the funds and then try and raise them if you'd like to go the donation routes.
And as I understand it, there is a repair fund, but there's four hundred dollars in it.
Right. That, that fund was created, I'm thinking in two thousand and six, that I think that's the first time that there was a large scale repair for the clock. We do have it checked each year or every other year, and that we have a line item in the budget. I think it's like three hundred dollars or some small amount, but, but that trust, that expendable trust fund that was created for it has about four hundred dollars in it.
Okay, it's interesting to note the Clockwatch Citizens Group that was put together in two thousand and six to look into the matter, which is pretty involved, actually. Including ongoing maintenance and winding of the restored clock. I, I would propose that we do some kind of fundraising. I don't know how you feel, Janet and Bill, relative to this clock.
I guess I want to see the clock repaired because I think it's important for the community, but I'm not sure how we would go about forming a committee to do that. A lot of the people who were involved in this fifteen years ago, some are dead, and they know the history of the church and the clock much better than I. So I don't know how you would form a committee to try to do this. I'm, I'm not sure how we would go forward.
So it's not clear to me that, as I understand, the clock is still operational. Is that, am I wrong? I think I hear it longing around.
Yes, it does continue to work at the moment.
And
I don't know if it has a lifespan, which is part of the
Well, as I read the proposal from the organization that apparently is being hired to do this, it's, it's a lot of cause what I would call cosmetic work. Now, that's not to dismiss the cosmetic work, but I I am increasingly concerned that we're already only a month into the new, into this fiscal year, and we're starting to get lots of requests for money that were not proposed to be spent during this, this year. And so I'm, I'm reluctant on a lot of these things to do that, and particularly when it appears there's some historical precedence for, for fundraising. So what I would suggest is that we put this in the next municipal matters, Kim, and see if we can, we don't have any audience here. We don't have the press here tonight. But I would think we'd like to see if we can garner some, some interest. I mean, this just didn't even come from the trustees of the church, just came from the secretary in the office.
Correct. And one of the members, Lori Lordson, certainly still is around.
Yeah, right. But I, but I, I don't know what
Historical knowledge.
I don't know what the current management of the church is even doing in terms of all the rest of the items here. And I, I, I sort of see this as one of those sort of eleventh hour requests that we don't need to rush into. I agree with Janet that, you know, we want to keep it going. But my, my recollection is I've been by there a few times when it's been operational. I think I heard it going during a recent funeral I was at, so.
Kim, did you ever talk with Peter Stanley about this? He was very
Not recently, but when he used to work for the town, I did speak with him and Mark Kaplan also, who related that it was pretty easy to raise the funds back then.
Well, maybe municipal matters is the way to go and just see what, what kind of a response we get. But I can't imagine that the people in this community would not want to see that clock running. And if it costs us nine thousand dollars, I can't imagine that the people wouldn't want to see that supported. Maybe they won't.
I'd like to find out. Although, yes, John?
Is this the only estimate we were given, or have we had?
No, it's just the only estimate. And again, as Bill noted, it came from,
Right.
I believe the secretary.
Yeah. So could we request another estimate? Just get a feel for why it is what it is?
John, it's part of a much larger proposal from the organization to redo the steeple on the church and repair stairs going up to it and so on. This is a sort of add-on to a much bigger project, which is why I said that we don't even know what the position of the
Right.
church leadership is in terms of doing this. So and I think the idea was, well, while we're up there, because they got to put scaffolding up and so on, we can do the things that are enumerated in this proposal, but
Right.
and, but, but I think it deserves a little bit more attention. I think that's what we're all saying. Not saying no, but let's, let's get some more information.
Yeah, okay.
Well, especially since they're talking about the hands, numerals, and minutes to be applied would be twenty-three karat genuine gold leaf. So a lot of it is aesthetic as opposed to, you know, the crank isn't working. Okay. I don't think we need to take a vote on the direction we're going at this point.
Nope.
Okay, discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Twenty-four, hmm, budget calendar.
Okay, I brought this up actually as a representative to the Budget Committee because I thought it was reasonably fair of us to first of all, make sure they realize that the joint sessions are going to be, excuse me, going to be on Thursday nights, not Monday nights.
Correct.
And that, you know, with a majority of them working, that probably is important. And then I just went back through and saw where your meetings were last year, and then have suggested here where we, the calendar, we might use this year to get us, get us going because as we get into the last quarter of the year, we're going to have a lot of things on our plate. So the sooner we can get the budget worked on, the better. And I've not talked to Kim about this. I don't know how soon, Kim, some of the departments could start to come forward here. But I do think we need to let the Budget Committee know what our, what our plans are for this so that we can work cooperatively with them. My shorthand there is regular is the, our regular meetings, assuming we go the second and fourth. Thursdays is an extra is fitting in a meeting to try to get the same number of meetings you had last year. And to get done by Thanksgiving. Because then the Budget Committee will have to take its turns.
So, Bill, I'm looking at the fourth and the eighteenth. Those are Tuesdays.
That was this year. This left-hand column is the
Okay.
Two thousand and twenty-one.
It's a little light.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My copying machine at home isn't as good as the one
Thank you.
Left column is actual.
Okay.
Right column is proposed, is proposed, given our Tuesday, Thursday, I mean, second, fourth, Thursday schedule. And between the twenty-second of September and the thirteenth of October, we have one of those three-week breaks. So I thought if, if Kim thinks she can has, will have things ready, that we could sneak an extra week in, in there. Because I noticed that every year, there's always an extra week at some point, like November first and November eighth last year.
So is that also assuming that the September eighth meeting would be too soon?
Turn to your left.
I'm sorry, I was helping. Where are we?
I was asking if the September eighth meeting would be too soon, since it's not on this list or proposed.
I guess the question is, Wendy's think that some departments will be ready to start sharing their budget with us? Or when will you be ready to share all the budgets with us?
Well, generally, we ask the department heads to have it done in mid-September.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Right. And because we started October fourth. So generally, it takes a week because we go back and forth. Lynn has to put all the information into the budget worksheets. We have to go back and forth with department heads for corrections or explanations. You know, they can do it, but
So I'm assuming the twenty-second, though, would be
Yeah, that's a couple of weeks. That's a couple of weeks early.
Well, it's the third week of September.
Right. But I mean, generally, they would have handed it to me. You would have gotten it somewhere near the end of September. Like, the first meeting last year was October fourth.
Right.
And you're saying the first meeting would be September twenty-second.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how we could have six meetings get done by Thanksgiving and not be doubled up on a lot of the things that we see coming down the road here for the fourth calendar quarter of the year. And to be fair to the Budget Committee, because my understanding is they're going to really want to have some extra time this year. But that's just, that's just me talking. And I, I think the number one thing is to signal the Thursdays and try to give them some idea of the dates because we do have a preponderance of people who have employment also. And maybe we want to think about this and come back at our next meeting and finalize it. We can do the Thursday part, that's in. But I think, Kim, the question to you is, for example, could, could you have the administrative stuff ready to go before everything else is done? And go over it with, with
I mean, I think the department heads are already working on their budgets. I mean, they just need the date. So I think that to have all of it all together at the same time is possible.
Okay, then I would, I would push to get, get going. I think Nancy, I'm hearing the eighth is probably too early.
Yep, I agree. So the twenty-second would be the date that we would shoot for to move things along.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's too early to say what we're going to do in November because our fourth Thursday in November is Thanksgiving Day, and obviously, we're not going to meet then. So anyway, I was just trying to get us started and recognizing the least what I think is a lot of stuff coming down the pike here.
So you're trying to turn it over to the Budget Committee sooner than the beginning of December? That's your goal?
Yes, yes. I think that was your goal last year, as I recall, and you had to have another meeting because there were some issues that didn't get resolved or
Correct.
You know, for Kim, for example, I mean, if to just schedule things, we could put the revenue and bonding, you know, bond type of information upfront, although Lynn won't have to worry about refinancing this year, I hope at these rates. It's just a proposal. Try to get us thinking about this and and letting the Budget Committee know what it looks like. And I don't know, maybe you know, Colin, once, once the Budget Committee meets without the selectmen, will you continue on Thursday nights or? No idea. Okay, that's probably a good reason for bringing it up tonight then, huh?
Well, why don't we say we're shooting for September twenty-second and see how that goes with the administrators and, you know, getting their budgets and ready? And the Budget Committee.
And even do something fancy. I'm sorry about the copying, but I was Maybe we do something fancy. I'm sorry about the copying, but I was just thinking before I came tonight, that probably be easier to have something written down than to have everybody whipping out their iPhones or something. And my copier doesn't, obviously copies stuff very well. So I, I apologize.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to criticize your copy.
It's all right, I'll buy it. Hey, Lynn, can I, can you get me a new copier to go with the, with, uh, Gina's?
Okay, let's go with the town administrator report, moving right along.
Okay, um, hopefully everybody read in Municipal Matters that we're going to do a sticker check day at the transfer station. Um, Will will be there with me. I will be there. Any Selectmen that would like to be there, um, we're going to literally stand at the gate, make sure that people have stickers when they drive in, and those that don't will be turned away. Even if we know somebody and they're using their daughter's or son's car or something, we're going to be tough. Um, I was at the transfer station the other day for the subcommittee meeting and the transfer station attendants were helping people and I saw some cars that didn't have stickers. And I get calls about it and we really need to make sure that people know they need to have a sticker.
I assume that's going to be a surprise date?
Surprise is right. We are warning people that is going to happen, but.
So you'll let us, you'll let us know, you'll let us know what the dates are.
Right, but you can't tell anybody. What's the word here, people?
I just need to get them on my car.
Get your stickers on your cars. Um, don't let your relatives take the garbage to the dump.
That's right. And I can see some people saying, but you know me, we're going to be tough, right, Will?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, Household Hazardous Waste Day, Saturday, remember, it's noon to three, that's different this year. We had the generator switch at the town offices fixed. We're now in compliance with the code. Our outage of power, instead of coming back on at eight, was closer to eleven, I think, but we had our budget subcommittee meeting and everybody managed with the blinds open. There was enough light, so it was fine. Sure, some people had to be turned away from car registrations, but I didn't hear any real screaming, so people were cooperative. Um, the Budget Committee Subcommittee Meetings have started. I think we've done recreation, administration, highway, I missed highway today, and transfer station. And so we have some more, yep. Um, some more coming up, but they're going very well, I think. That's all we have.
Okay, thanks, Kim. All right, committee meetings and reports. Bill?
None.
Janet?
Nope. I have a question, though. Any movement on tables and chairs for Whipple?
Well, I was going to talk about the Whipple Project Committee, which did meet on Monday.
Good.
Um, so, um, Colin was there, uh, Rip was there, uh, Phil Sherman, uh, Frank and myself. Um, and we talked about three different, um, items, one being the furniture, second being, um, air conditioning, and the third being the construction manager. Um, the furniture, um, Amanda has been working on some, uh, proposals for uh, color scheme as well as type of chairs and tables. Um, and that will be forthcoming to us. Um, as well as the study, um, Frank is meeting with the mechanical engineer. I believe it was today, um, to discuss, uh, the air conditioning, um, and what would need to happen relative to, um, uh, really, uh, insulating the building or not, but basically to come back with a proposal, uh, as to how the board wants to go forward. Um, and then the third is, um, reaching out, Frank would be reaching out to two groups to do some sort of preliminary proposals for pre-construction, um, manager to sort of pull things together. Um, but they'll be coming back with some proposals for us and we meet again on August twenty-second at, at one o'clock.
So you think that it's possible they might have some numbers and?
Yes, and, um, they're actually looking again at the chairs at, uh, uh, the library, um, which you can order them, uh, with locking wheels. I mean, that was one of the concerns, nice chairs, but they didn't lock and based on the experience here, um, feel that, uh, we needed, especially since we don't have a first aid kit at the moment. Um, no, I'm only kidding. Um, so anyway, so, so yes, that's where we are, but we're moving forward.
Great.
And two types of tables, the sort of executive table, um, for the meetings, um, and the a few executive tables that would be more expensive, again with locking, uh, wheels, uh, so that they can be easily moved. Um, and then the narrower tables for, um, seminars or whatever else might happen in that room. Yes, Will?
Are you guys talking about where it's all going to get stored to when there's stuff like elections and that sort of stuff, just because?
Well, we have no choice but the back of the room. But the way all those chairs are stacked there now, um, we're hoping that these things are a bit more, um, compact, if you will.
And, and will the tables be usable for the elections?
I mean, are they? For the elections.
Right, are we going to have to have tables on top of tables?
No, 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 no.
Checking in.
I mean, there, there'll be multipurpose.
Okay.
But just two different types in terms of size and whatever else and their functionality. Um, and that was it.
Anything further on the, um, speed signs?
No, nothing new on that. The chief is looking into the cost and I believe the bunker road folks are looking to raise money.
Well, I see that the one in Siemens Road has been moved.
Kind of goes around different places.
Yeah.
We get more of them. Use will slow down, but right.
Right, yeah. I get up to ramming speed.
Okay, um, I'll take a proposal to accept the minutes of June twenty-third.
I have one correction to the June twenty-third minutes.
Okay.
On page four, down toward the bottom. Um, it says that the budget year ends at the end of July and it should be the end of June.
Okay.
Under budget review.
Anything else?
No.
That it. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June twenty-third.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July fourteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we accept the minutes. Thank you. Um, we have, um, the next regular, uh, Board of Selectmen's meeting will be Thursday, August eighteenth, and then we have the litany of all of the other town meetings that are going on, plus all of the budget subcommittee meetings, um, and so forth. Uh, other business? Do we have anything?
You do first, don't you, uh, Kim? Kim, you have some first, don't you?
Yeah, she does.
Okay, so the Bike Walk Coalition requests four thousand five hundred dollars to put bike racks at Elkins Beach and Buckland Beach. Recreation Commission approved the request to support the use of the Recreation Department Activity Fund for this purpose. And as you know, the Activity Fund has more than sixty thousand dollars in it currently.
Okay, I have a problem with this proposal because it seems to me buying bike racks at the end of the summer is not a particularly timely, timely move, and I would suggest, well, I'm in favor of bike racks, as I said when Russ was here, that we ask them to come back in, uh, March and make this request again when we have a better idea about the spending for this year. As I said a few minutes ago, we're only one month into the year and I can't imagine why we would buy bike racks in August when the beach is closed in another month, largely closed.
Janet?
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's a good suggestion, Bill.
Yeah, it's not an anti-bike rack.
No, no, of course.
What are we going to do with them all winter?
It's timing.
Timing question, yep.
Well, I think they would be, as I understood, it was a permanent installation. Um, but the, the point still is well-taken. Okay, um, that sounds like how we're going to proceed.
Good.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think be sure and tell them to come back on a timely basis, too.
Well, the next, um, piece of business is the acceptance of the police body cam grant in the amount of forty-nine thousand five sixty. The application for the grant, excuse me, was approved, excuse me, was approved by the Selectmen in February. Total cost is one hundred and seven thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. Remaining fifty-seven thousand eight fifty-four may come from three sources. Uh, we have ARPA funds, we have the Police Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, we have the operating budget if funds are available. And this will include fourteen body cameras and six dashboard cameras.
This is DOJ grant?
Uh, Department of Safety, yep.
Department of Safety.
So I move to approve the grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Safety and accept the grant in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for the purchase of body cameras and dashboard cameras for the Police Department.
I'll second that. Can I just ask a question first? So, um, I'm trying to remember, do we need to, um, have this as matching funds and is that a guarantee? I mean, we need to make a guarantee relative to?
Right, that's the fifty-seven thousand, the, the additional money.
And are we cobbling, what, what's left in ARPA? Is there any one fund that can cover the whole thing or do we really need to cobble things together?
No, I gave you those three because you can choose among them.
I see.
Um, thinking the operating budget may or may not work out. We may decide to go that way if there are enough funds in the Police Department budget or another budget. But there's also ARPA funds. We've only, the only commitment you have there is about a hundred thousand to the water precinct. So there's still three hundred thousand left there. And then we also have the capital reserve account that has about twenty thousand in it.
Didn't we commit money for the sewer also at the same time we did the water?
I think you just committed the hundred thousand to the, the twenty-five percent.
I did, oh, okay.
Do you have a recommendation or does Lynn have a recommendation?
Well, I think it's kind of early, as Bill's pointed out, we're only a month into the, um, budget. It could be that we have the funds available in the operating budget.
So we don't have to say to Department of Safety where the funds are coming from?
No, you're committing though.
Guarantee that they're there.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, fine. Okay, there's a motion that has been seconded in. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, and that's it for other business.
No. Under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three comma two.
Well, that's under non-public, but.
Well, I'm sorry, you have to say it here, though, don't you?
Business.
D, that we go into non-public session for the consideration of the buying, selling, leasing of, um, real estate, property, and also, uh, there two A for personnel matter.
Second. All those in favor?
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call, Bill?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Nancy, aye. Thank you. Go enjoy in the heat, the, uh, chamber night at, uh.
No, no, take the rides, spend money.